Have better greenway accessibility to town. So I'm going to go back. And can you...
Councilor Puskas?
Yeah, so as far as if we have maybe additional transportation goals, is it the time to talk about that? Or would you rather do that with the action plan?
If you have an additional goal.
It just seems that it's kind of noted. I think we have other aspirations that would follow your transportation.
So that would be in addition to the action plan? You're still committed to the overall goal? Or is it a separate goal that you're proposing? Councilor Byers?
So the only goal under transportation right now is greenway?
Yeah.
Is there... Are you, Councilor, suggesting additional transportation goal?
Yes, and I don't know if you want us to add to that.
Yeah, and we might be talking about the same thing. I would want to add a goal of improving walkability in the city.
Improving walkability?
So I'm just not understanding how that's not under the transportation goals. It's just additional action items. Like what am I missing, Karen?
Because the word "goals" next to "have better accessibility to town", so that appears to be the only goal under the transportation umbrella. Is that maybe different?
I'm just reading the sidebar, so I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
So perhaps, perhaps, perhaps that goal and the one that's up here are really the same goal, but there are more action items.
Yeah, it might very well be that if we interpret the goal that's there less specifically as just going to the greenway and more broadly, everything will be covered.
Yep.
And I'm fine with that.
Yeah, maybe we'll change the name of that.
So include walkability. All of these could follow with that goal.
Yes, yes, and I think greenway was definitely something that's being worked on. I know Kristen's working on that, Osprey's working on that, with Safe Route to School and also general walkability in parks. So that sounds like action plan stuff to me. So I agree with you.
I think it's a change in the goal name, or like just moving to that way or something. Right action, huh?
Okay. Are there any... Are there any other, while we're on this topic of transportation?
I know.
Any other transportation goals that come to mind immediately while we're visiting this area? Are we good with the coordination that we have? Or good with the streets that we have? We need to address... I don't know, does the city have a comprehensive street improvement plan?
We do. We adopted a transportation plan, and it might be an action item to review the transportation plan this year. We adopted it last year, I believe.
We have a grant that's going to redo it.
Back to the list. We have, the next goal area is community engagement. First one is we communicate better with the community. That's a goal. Still looking. We provide strong committee and commission support. And we perform regular community engagement. Which is on board with all of those continuing to be goals. And then we are in economic development. We understand what businesses need. We help refer to established essential businesses. What's an essential business? Think into my mind.
Well, I think that was the point of doing the update on the economic opportunities analysis.
All right. We become a stronger destination. Destination for the purpose. Destination for... Okay, the next group is sustainable foundation. City code policies and practices are consistent, up to date, and documented. City infrastructure is well maintained and revenue keeps pace with expenditure. If you were prioritizing the goals, would this be the top one?
Councilor Puskas? Could you clarify, do you mean goals within the sustainable foundation? Or do you mean...
Sustainable foundation.
Sustainable foundation within the whole thing?
Well, it seems to me that that is an area that, you know, we pretty much have to keep up with, right? Where all the other ones would start to turn a little bit easier.
Do you think it's visually important to arrange the goals in some kind of a priority list? Perhaps sustainable foundation being on the top of the list, even though they're near the end?
Councilor Puskas?
The way my mind kind of works, and it's mine for my industry software, is that foundation is really kind of at the bottom, and it kind of spans all the other goals and supports all the other goals. So to Councilor Bistis' point, I completely agree with it. You must have a functioning city financial solvent and all of that to achieve any of the other things. So you have to achieve a certain level of competence there, but then the extra energy and work and innovation and creativity can be done on the other page. So you have to just kind of meet a certain level of the foundation. So visually, I see that kind of at the bottom, but it's spanning all the other.
So would it be correct then to characterize it as a foundational goal?
Sure. I did want to add to the conversation too, and I know this will be more applicable when we get to the activities, but one of the things that we did last year, we started off with these goals being time faced, and, you know, if I remember, it was like high, it was one year, and then it was one to three years, and then it was two to five years or something like that. It was... And then it was changed more generally to medium, high, medium, and low. And the reason I point that out now is because I think on some level, what I see as, I agree with the foundational aspect of things, but what I see as both the high level goals as being... I mean, I see those as across the board, the top goals, the ones that really can build the platforms for the next level of those goals, et cetera. So I don't think it's as simple as just...
So...
Yeah, I don't think it's as simple as identifying one. I mean, the foundational piece is absolutely correct, but I don't think there's a hierarchy of the goals themselves, but that each goal has a hierarchy. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah, and if you could collect up the high, medium, and lows in an exhibit that would help focus on the high, high level goals.
Yeah, and not to misinform anybody, but I was just trying to remember how, what timeframe they each have, like how many hot, you know, how many years was high, how many years was medium, and low. I'm sure there's notes on that somewhere if it's germane. Councilor Byers?
Well, and to that point, I would say that so many of these goals just across each bucket are interconnected. So like, some of them in one field can't be completed in some other one over here, the high priority foundational one has occurred. So I think it can be... It's not helpful.
Challengeable, we could create a matrix to demonstrate.
Exactly, exactly. I think it goes towards points of being as efficient and responsible as we can with the resources at hand.
Well, I'm used to doing this in fashion where you do have bracketed time periods. And... I think it helps kind of look at it from the perspective of someone who's putting together a budget. If it's a high priority goal, does that mean this year, next year? What am I going to put that in my budget matrix? So I'm used to doing like one-year goals. We... Or one-year action items. And then having a like a two to four, more than four, more than 10. Up to 10. Where do you comfortable? Are you comfortable with this or something a little bit?
Councilor Puskas? Were you raising your hand?
I was thinking about it. I like the idea of more specific, with the understanding that circumstances change, we may not meet goals, but I really like the idea of a more specific time layout and schedule.
I did want to also point out that originally, these were up to five-year goals, if I remember correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody? And since most of these are assigned by, to staff, if, I think that before it comes back to the council for adoption, it would be a good idea to, I mean, I'm sure you're thinking about this, but it would be a good idea for staff to give us their input. I mean, I can think of an example. Let me just give you an example too. It makes sense. The Title 18 code updates were high, and they were supposed to be done in a year, but our consultant hasn't been available, right? So those are considerations that I think we need to have when... And I really feel like staff has more information on that than we do. So I don't want to set unreasonable expectations when you guys have more information about that. And I'm just asking for that to take place before they come back to us. Councilor Byers?
Yeah, I was going to say, in general, just before that, before this came out, I just noticed that so many of these are assigned to staff, and it makes me uncomfortable. It's hard for me to, I mean, I trust that, Gary, that you can kind of handle on what's possible and timelines and things, but it's, yeah, it's a little bit hard for me with, when we have such a small staff and have so much going on in the day-to-day, that, yeah, Chris, I would hope that we can also take that into consideration, that so many are assigned to staff.
I appreciate that, Puskas. There's a great turnout of staff here today, and they are prepared to chat with you about impairments to achieving goals. Available resources is at the top of that list. And available resources can include money and consulting services that are not immediately available.
High, available capacity.
Supply chain. And we've got, just as a small example that you walk by every day, is we've got a kitchen remodel project that we started after there was a water leak in the building before I became a member of the staff. So it's been about three months. And the project isn't completed because we can't get Corvica countertops. So that's just a small example of an impairment that we didn't anticipate. So that kind of impairment can be much bigger. Lack of available resources, lack of available staffing, lack of funding. So when we go back through this and look at the action items, you're ever going to talk about that? And, you know, I've got a section on the agenda here for the staff, but we may have them slightly yet earlier as we go through those backgrounds. Okay, we did a first review. You've got this list that I gleaned from my previous meetings with you. Maybe you see something on this list that you contributed? Maybe not. It would be good though, as we go through the next round here, that we want to take a look at active items. Are these items already in the plan? Or do these add to, and do we do where? And we're going to look on some staff materials, make some comments as well through this process. So we've got a little housing. Got to update the whole land inventory. I think the planning, and I'd say that that's a medium effort level and is in progress. And Kristen, that's something that's in your wheelhouse, right?
Yep.
So it's kind of, I mean, you're a Christian history expert. What do you see as the timeline for achieving that action plan?
The first one, update billable land inventory, that's in progress right now. We're going to start stakeholders groups, and it'll come out to planning commissioner and council by the end of March.
And about when do you think it will come out?
It'll be completed by the end of May. So March, April, we'll be having meetings. We're setting up a stakeholders group in the next month.
Okay, so the inventory will be completed this fiscal year?
This fiscal year. Yeah. And the updated housing needs analysis, we can't do that until 2025 because the state is redoing all that criteria and how a housing needs analysis is completed. So that, we can't even, we wanted to do that as part of our grant funding, and they said no, unless you were already in the process. So we will be doing that, following all of the other projects that we have. Adopt code change for revision of Highway 99 corridor TGM. That's in progress. That'll start, the code updates will start here soon. As soon as all the agency, all the other agencies jurisdictions have gone through the, adopting the first phase and then going on and integrating to the second phase, which council's already done in early February, end of January. Final Title 18 code updates. We'll probably wait until we go through the TGM and then the CFAK updates and see how that affects. I think we should hold off until...
So for those two items, Title 18 and Title 17, what time bracket should we put those in?
January 2025, possibly.
For both of them?
For 18, 17, and 18. That's a tough turnaround, but we could, assuming we get through the climate-friendly equitable communities and the TGM grant changes, and then we go back to our Title 17 and 18, we can get through there.
So if we do this on the basis of a, yeah, not everything goes perfect.
Maybe earlier on the Title 17, 18. The CFAK and Bear Creek is December 2024. They want all that completed by that date. We have a deadline. And then, yeah. So those are all kind of interrelated.
Okay. No changes for non-conforming rebuild?
That's complete.
Complete. Review, make buffers, and environmental development standards?
That's on our list.
On your list?
Yeah.
And review and establish for the bottom-up base of the tree cover yourself. Also on your list?
Also on my list.
On those two last items, what are the impairments to complete?
Staff capacity, time, and then all the...
So are those...
What's keeping us from doing them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be staff capacity and the projects that are currently...
So are those, so do you think those are two years out? One year out?
Well, I think the council is looking at doing agricultural buffers sooner than two years, but, yeah, I don't, that hasn't been on my priority list up to now.
So what would you need to be able to do that soon?
More staff?
Consultant?
It's just another management of my time, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can I have some input on that, or please? Yeah. So the concern is that we are actively working on the annexation of the RPS lands, the TA1. And given that it's next to active agriculture use, and it was formerly, two different issues, formerly the experiment station for OSU that that was a property of. It seems like what's pushing this timeline a little bit is the, yeah, bringing those lands in to, I think we have an upcoming annexation.
We do. That's coming to you in April.
So the concern about that one is that the timing of that annexation and the former use of, the historical use of that property and the adjacent property, it seems to be driving this decision, I mean, it's driving the concern for the council as stated at a previous meeting. So I'm wondering if that is going to influence this decision? So there are barriers and impairments, but there's also motivation.
Question?
So...
We have a question with Councilor Puskas.
Yeah, so because the concern is specific to TA1, I just wanted to know whether, you know, the possibility would be to, if it was easier to not have, you know, the whole city kind of agricultural buffer, take on that entire policy, but rather to that specific area? In other words, to limit the scope of the agricultural buffer conversation to the unit at hand versus try to create one that's holistic for the entire city? That would be, help ease the pressure on time and effort for that. So that's really just kind of a question for all of you.
The RPS went through a really detailed, and I can send you the appendix for that, that they went through a very detailed analysis of all those buffer zones.
So that's kind of addressing the question of whether or not we need to do something or not. But I think, as council's already said, that we do want to look at this. The question really is, can we limit the scope? So would that be that helpful, to limit the scope of that?
I don't know how that would work. We would still have to adopt something for...
Prior to the annexation?
Yeah. Well, the annexation isn't a development. The annexation is just bringing it into the city. So there will not be any development once it's annexed. They still have to go through a whole process. However, so at that time, then the buffer zones would be, would need to be in place.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I hear what you're saying about that. I don't know if I agree with it, but I hear what you're saying. And I think when it comes to the buffer zone, which I was, I was part of that, that analysis 20 something years ago. And there's been a lot of changes since then. But as it pertains to the buffer zone, I agree, but the concern is that it was formerly the OSU experiment station where they experimented with chemicals that are now available. And annexing in that property to the city prior to understanding, and it could be that there's, it could be that we have a better understanding on the other side of some sort of analysis. And then everything is fine, but we don't know that at this time. So that's, that's why there's two separate, that's why we're identifying it as two separate issues.
I believe that's up to the school district to do, and they're in the process of that now.
That might be the case, but I think annexation is up to the council. So I mean, I think, you know, we just definitely want to try to set up a situation where we're either having study sessions with the school, or, I mean, I can talk about that as well.
If we move that to high, what do we move to medium?
Good question.
What was that?
If we move the agricultural buffer's item to high priority, what do we move to medium?
I have a suggestion. I think the climate-friendly area work is being delayed in lawsuits anyway, and...
They're moving forward.
Are they?
Yeah, everybody, yeah, they're starting to model codes right now. I don't know, I mean, by 2024, December 2024, they want to have everything done. But I don't know how, nobody knows how that lawsuit's going, the appeal's going to come.
I'll just say, I actually don't feel, we're not worried about the climate-friendly adoption. I feel like we're on track, and we can see a deviation from what we're doing anyway, code-wise, for that, the establishment climate-friendly area. I'm, Kristen, my way off base here.
I understand what you're saying, and I agree. However, I'm still going to be part of the climate-friendly code updates. They're still going to push that along.
Okay, that's not under our control? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so that has to be...
The state will still push it along. I'll still be meeting with them, still be dealing with the consultants. They have a consultant, Cascadia Partners, and they're moving forward with all of that.
Okay, so we can't unilaterally prioritize that as part of the...
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of even the TGM and the CFAK stuff, we really don't have, I mean, it's just happening without our priority.
Yeah, that's good information. So that's like a challenge.
So maybe we not even put that as a priority for the city, and it just happens.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilor Bistis?
I guess I'm just looking for clarity. Because I understand, I think, Kristen's point, that, you know, environmental reviews on such a property usually happens as part of the development process. So I'm wondering if the concern with bringing the annexation in before we know, is that a concern of like a liability for the city that now we're responsible for whatever may be there? And we don't know whether they are going to be there? Is that a big concern?
I'm hearing conflicting information about that. That's what I think would be the purpose of understanding that better.
What conflicting about?
About the point of annexation and annexing in the property without knowing the impact.
Because we're concerned about the liability the city would be taking on?
I'm hearing conflicting information about that, and I don't feel comfortable with my level of understanding of either taking action or not taking action.
Okay, so the message I'm getting is that we need to find a way to move that up, but we've got impairments like available resources. So we'll need to come to you with some recommendations on what needs to get in order for us to move that up.
Yeah, and to Dave's point, whether or not that is something that the city needs to concern themselves with at the point of annexation.
Okay. Yeah, that's my question, because, you know, it's a little complicated because there's an annexation versus it's just a piece of property that is going to be developed. There's a, at least in my mind, and Kristen, you can correct me, there's sort of a process to, that has to go through before it gets developed. But I'm not sure where the issue is with the annexation part. And is the city really becoming liable for potential toxic cleanups? Is that the concern? Or maybe there's not a concern at that point? I don't really know. Or maybe there's not a concern at that point? I don't really know.
Councilor Conover?
Yeah, for me, the concern isn't so much liability, is the risk to kids that are going to be on that as... I'm sure it is for you as well. And if it's just used as a playground, there may not be the, if EIS isn't environmental views that- that you would have for development.
Oh, that's a key question.
So this is, uh, the topic on to itself, uh, as to what level the city needs to get involved with the environmental review beforehand of the city, right? So that- but that's a driver. If that- if that's a decision that's made, then that's a driver to move this item.
Right. Sounds good, Gary. Thank you.
So are there other items from this list, which is really curious, uh, that needs to go into the, uh, what else we need to look at? We're asking items. Yes.
Yeah, I'm seeing what I- what I feel is a missing hole under here, and that is something that I feel like we are doing, um, but maybe it needs to be spelled out. And that is to partner with other mission-driven organizations to either purchase land or create affordable housing. Um, I feel like all of these things that we have on the list are kind of in the weeds and very important, but there's also the broader goal that we can do, um, at the higher levels. So yeah, partner, uh, others to, um, to actually, uh, either purchase land or create affordable housing.
It's likely to be an add-on item on the list.
Well, I would say connected to that, interconnected, but not necessarily a sub or a heading for that is the implementation of the Gateway Development.
So is this where the Gateway Development- the Gateway Development isn't on any of these?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So is this where the Gateway Development belongs, or is it in Economic Development?
Yes.
So it's a- it's sort of a goal?
Well, because part of the- part of it was to incorporate some affordable housing into it, so it got involved there.
And part commercial.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Mayor was talking about Gateway.
Yeah.
In my review of the goals and priorities, since I didn't find Gateway mentioned.
Yeah.
Where does it belong?
I don't think we've ever integrated urban renewal goals with city goals, but I don't- that's not to say we shouldn't. I mean, we usually have a goal setting for urban renewal as well.
Okay.
But if, uh, if, since you're...
Regulating the urban renewal, sort of, phase around.
Yeah.
It'll be, uh, the city will have to decide which projects to incorporate into cities and structures and, uh, corporate, of course. And the Gateway Circuits Make appears to be a project that's going to perhaps outlive the urban renewal basis. So I think it should be on this list, because it's- it's going to involve both UTRA and city resources and staff to handle, uh, to deal with a project of that scope. So we can put it in a couple of places here, Economic Development and Housing.
I do want to clarify at this time that while it takes- it- while it takes capacity, um, there is a- there is a MOU in place that, um, that Urban Renewal supports that capacity use with financial resources. So just to point that out.
All right.
Yeah.
So we can put it in, put Gateway in housing and also put it in Economic Development? And it- it- my sense is that that's going to be the biggest lift that we have in the next couple of years. So moving ahead with the gateway project, the people agree with that?
I don't know that. I mean, I- I don't know, because I don't understand the quote, but I, um, um, I should say, I'm not sure we understand the quote in the same way, is what I would say. And, um, so I do think that this warrants a bigger conversation at Urban Renewal about what our actual outcome is and, you know, what we expect from that gateway project in terms of like where is the endpoint, you know, who- who ends up being the developer, et cetera, and how's what that looks like to everybody. I don't know that we see it differently, but I don't know that we, uh, that we see it all the same based on kind of the historic trajectory of that property.
All right. So for the affordable housing, more housing stock, for affordable and workloads household, that's the only goal, affordable housing. We're going to add implement gateway project. So any other goals that are not of the deal of affordable housing that we're not addressing here?
Councilor Conover?
Yeah, I just want to just reemphasize that Gateway is an example of partnering with others, and like you say, it's our biggest slip, but I think there are other opportunities that we can help support other groups that are creating affordable housing. Certainly not would be that not necessarily the lift of the gateway, but, um, as you mentioned, we move forward to create those relationships, perhaps purchase land, opportunities arise. So we want- it's fine with me to combine it to the gateway, but I wouldn't want to extract that.
All right. Moving ahead, community safety. We've got Post Community Talent Hall to discuss police funding. Did we do that? Looks like it's a median goal. That's still on our radar, something we want to do?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And remove hazardous fuels from and replant Bear Creek, replant Wagner Creek, replant? Seems like we're worrying.
Yeah, considering Robert.
Uh, and update emergency operations plan and continuity of operations plan. And Chief and I have had some discussions about this, and it's slow-moving because of available resources. Is that current? So talk about that a little bit.
Correct. Essentially, I've been networking with other community emergency managers, and, um, it's really a full-time position initially for us to get up and running. And so it's really a capacity issue for us. I've looked at trying to find consultants to help in my workload. I've been very unsuccessful with that. So, um, it's- I'm networking with partner agencies, but unfortunately, um, our EOP has not been updated. And, um, you know, my hopes is maybe this summer again with our SRO, he gets out of school as we can put some of the workload on him and focus a little bit more. But, uh, it just seems that it's- we keep treading water on it and not getting much movement. Um, it, you know, I really see it more of a part-time position for somebody in order to get all the goals that are mentioned after this goal complete. So, um, the city staff have been great about going to the classes and getting this where we need to be in that direction. And so we're- we're moving forward, but it's slower than I had hoped for.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
Because I think this brings up a great example across the board, where resources are capacity, uh, resources are an issue in these things. Um, were- was this budgeted for? Was an additional person budgeted for in the previous budget cycle? So, um, based, let me, so when these were, when these were formed and these came to the staff last year, did they, did you guys as a staff look at what the resource needs were going to be and then build that into the budget for these goals? Is this the first time you guys are doing this with the city manager?
I'll be honest, I wasn't involved in these goals last year, so...
They were just given to you?
They were given to us.
Yeah.
Councilor Brighter?
Can you just refresh my memory, but so it says in- so it's not in progress, though it said in progress. But, um, one there, are you- are you speaking to, there was, I remember at some point there was a conversation about, um, sharing with local, you know, or, um, neighboring towns. Uh, so that, you're saying is not...
That is in progress. Updating our EOP is not currently in progress. I did have some meetings scheduled, but because of other, uh, agencies' workloads, um, there's other agencies that are willing to help us, um, but it's a capacity issue. It's, um, you know, things come up and then it gets setback. And, uh, the development of the response partnership, that is in progress. Um, but that also comes down to funding. So I am actively working with the City of Ashland and attending monthly meetings on, um, you know, they're building their emergency operation centers, and we are, um, participating in that, knowing that we could potentially have to go down there if we have an emergency in talent or vice versa. We need, if they need to stand one up in the city of talent because theirs is not accessible, then we would be partnering with them. That does, you know, uh, IGAs and MOUs would have to be in place for that, and we're- we're building upon that. Um, honestly, it is hard for me to go to all the meetings, uh, again, due to workload, but, um, we are making steps in that direction. Uh, we also have had talks about partnering with the fire department and maybe, uh, you know, doing more of a regional, um, coordination effort. Or further talks down the road is contracting, uh, IGA with Jackson County. So, um, those are just really low-level conversations that, um, but we are strongly working with the City of Ashland. At one point, we were looking at, um, having their emergency manager do some work with us, but that wasn't supported, um, from the City of Ashland.
I have a follow-up question. I have a follow-up question. So I- I just want to make sure that we're all very clear, because this is, I think, surprised everybody. I think the record would show that we were under, we were told that the ranking was done by you all. So are you saying that none of you were involved in the ranking of this? The high priority, the medium priority, what you could do and what timeframe and...
Well, I mean, I- I had conversations about these topics, but, um, I- I mean, I- I will say I probably don't completely recall if it was a hundred percent, yes, this was a high priority. Uh, but we weren't on the- at the table when these priorities were moved.
So just so you know, we're at the table now.
Right, and I'm not, don't want to fall on it, but I want to make sure, um, it- it tempers the way we look at the progress of these issues, of these concerns. If there was something that was set as a high priority and it's not done, and we were under the understanding that you- you guys said your own, like you guys were involved in the resource conversation, I think it not only tempers the way we see it, but it also tempers the way we look at them moving forward as well.
Well, and I agree with where these priorities are set. It's just they're not completely attainable.
Well, and they're not resourced, right? And that's all part of that discussion, right? I would not expect the city manager to come to us, and I think this is important, Gary, and I appreciate the space to say it, but we would not expect something to come back to us as a high priority after reviewing with staff if there was not some expectation that it would also be resourced during the budget process. And, um, and that's hard to identify when you look at that, that budget, you know? Is this dollar not going to that person that you're going to bring, that you're going to pay for to do this, this project? Do you see what I'm saying? So, um, yeah, and I think it tempers the discussion.
Before I go there, so our goal is to do this work before the budget. Uh, and, um, we're talking about budget realities under chess, so...
I can...
Uh, and let you know that these are the goals that we've set, and this is our ability to achieve those, and that may affect your goal setting at that time or your understanding of this is a high priority, but in order to get there, we're going to have to do something else in the budget to accommodate it.
Yeah, well, I just want to say that I really appreciate that this is happening, because in my experience, this is why so many goals don't get achieved, because this is what the council or the board sees as high priorities, and then that just establishes it without that loop to find out, well, can we have what we need to even do this? So I'm seeing this as the unique experience that I'm glad we're having. And anything in the past is just like the way it's always been done before. So I'm just, I'm thankful you're here, and I'm thankful you're doing this.
So to take off of that and some things that Jen mentioned, uh, to... You got to have willing partners, so you're going to partner. Uh, and my experience with that is that there can be willing partners. For example, in Curry County, the county provided a, had a full-time emergency services coordinator, and she helped each city develop their own emergency operating plan. That's because Curry's- Curry County saw that as a resource that they could share. Some agencies that you would like to partner with, they have the same resource issues we do. So they- they don't have the resources to share. I think we can continue to pursue that, and there may be, may be some ways to jointly fund, uh, some of this, uh, some of these needs. But that takes, that takes time to build those relationships, and they need to be built not only at the staff level, but at the leadership level. So we'll engage you with that, uh, as we go about communicating these, uh, details.
As we do that, will we be able, so the other thing I recall about doing a five-year plan that I thought was very unique, that we did for the first time last year instead of just seven goals for the next biennium, is we did five-year goals. And, um, I think as we do that, it's going to be important for us to still recognize that, like last year, where we talked about some of the goals being of the rollover into the next category at any time. And, um, you guys, uh, I think you guys can help us identify that as well, is that we might not get this done this year, but it could roll into the next year. And I think that's important, because we might want to hang on to the goal, uh, but...
It could be the next year or multiple years, and to, uh, and part of the direction would be to develop strategies for developing the resources needed to achieve those. Because we don't have the resources to achieve everything that's listed.
In the first year or over a five-year period?
Um, I would say over the five-year period, well, we'd be able to address the resource issue.
So on- on the goals is I just want to reiterate that, you know, as, um, the prior years is we're always working, you know, departments are always working with the city manager, the staff of what's, you know, in line of what we're doing and what we're trying to achieve. So all these goals under community safety, we're always talking about them. Um, usually the talks are, we're still not there, we're still unable to achieve it. But, um, again, I am in agreeance with all these goals and the priorities set. And, um, and I've even, uh, the Establish the Volunteer Education Program, um, CERT is something I know the community desires to have as well as I. Um, again, it's, it's a capacity issue. I don't have any personnel that can oversee, um, even ten volunteers effectively. So, um, we're looking at, I've been talking with both Jackson County Fire District Five, that is in the early stages of talks of re-establishing their CERT program, and also Ashland has a very robust CERT program, and, um, we've been invited to the table on that. So, um, you know, those are things that are in the works, but we're not quite there yet.
Jocelyn, you have a question?
No, actually, it was a question, it's a comment. Um, it would be really helpful from a finance point of view, is when we create these goals or when we create these goals, that we attach a financial impact to them? Because in maybe estimate, okay, for instance, establish a volunteer education program that may cost the city $20,000. But if you add up all of the items, and we may not be able to attain that in our next year's budget.
We'll be looking at it at that cost. We'll be looking at it at that concept.
And we do understand that, right? One thing that we do understand is that goals are guidelines, they're not, you know, set in stone. And that the six-month review we're supposed to be having on these goals every six months is part of that, is part of that reason for that, is that we can make adjustments along the way. Five years is a long time. 10 meetings between now and then is really helpful to adjust those goals. Councilor McNamara?
Thanks. I have a question for Jen, since we're talking about this. Have you thought about partnering all the school district insofar as they're trying to develop the Talent Elementary and Talent Middle School as a resilience hub? And installing solar, backup batteries as a place for the community to go in case of a natural disaster as well? I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity, because they do have, you know, their staff John, working on this, there might be an opportunity to coordinate something like that along with, you know, maybe even help from, at one point, there was paint staff for Climate who was helping to get grant money and coordinate with other folks to make this happen from an engineering perspective. So I guess my question to you is, do you see opportunities to, or are you working with the school district on any of these natural disaster safety stuff?
Yes, we just had a meeting a few days ago with the superintendent. We are, you know, working, I have KES in school, so I can make it a center if we need to. We do have that, we do have that set up, and then, of course, we have our SRO that's within the school. So we work on those plans. Right now, we're trying to work on the unification plans as well, as there was disasters, you know, where families go to pick up their students, and there's a lot of fluid things to think about, and so we are working on that. You know, we need to work on getting a generator for this building so that we have power, so that we can utilize it either for the community or for AUC. Those are priorities as, so...
And if I could just follow up on that, to Tessa's point about, you know, the money, it'd be nice for us to also see, like, percentage of an MTE on a monthly basis, what, that gives us the sense of the amount of prison's time, for example. And my question regarding the school district is wondering if whether the school district could fund a consultant to help out with some of these things, and to maybe even like the volunteer program or something like that, if there was a way to kind of get them to partner with us and maybe help with the staffing lift on that.
It also takes resources to make it work.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why I was thinking, like, the school district, we do the best, the volunteers are helping out.
Jen, any other comments?
I'd like to kind of touch base on the police funding. You know, we did the feasibility study a couple of years back, and I know Tessa's gonna talk about budget, but that is, you know, we have it as medium. I foresee that needs to be, you know, medium to high priority. Everything's going up, our cost of operations are going up. We are fully staffed, thank you, hallelujah. But with that comes additional expenses. It's expensive to train people. You know, I have a $7,000 training budget with a staff of 12 people. It's a very high liability job, there's high demands for quality training. We do meet a lot of training online, but it's not the same as doing things in groups or practical exercises. So it's, you know, that's weighing heavy on me as far as how are we gonna keep up with the costs.
Councilor Meyer?
I do have a question, and I'm so glad you just referenced us, because, one, it's an understanding thing for me, and two, I would love to hear staff input. The rankings of high, medium, and low, I'm seeing at the very top of the pages as effort level as opposed to priority. And so I'm really curious to know how you, how staff would prioritize these goals, because the way I'm interpreting this page is how much work it would take to accomplish the goal as opposed to how important it is. And so just as we're having this conversation, I would love to hear input from staff on all of that as well, both on the realities of effort level and then also the prioritization. So that's just that.
Councilor McNamara?
Yeah, so to Chief Snook's point, we have under the Sustainable Policy Model, the Town Call to Discuss Police Funding. I'm wondering if an additional action item would be something like what we did with water rates so well, is that kind of analysis, which the PSU study was supposed to do, but turn it into a financial analysis, so we can actually look at the community safety fee, to the extent the community safety fee is funding our community safety, and make some financial decisions about that. So that would just be a...
So can you start with that again?
Yeah, so under the goal Achieve Sustainable Policy Model, we have post-Town Call, and right under that, examine the fee model, fee model study, community fee safety study, whatever we call the water model.
The cost of service study.
Cost of service study?
Yeah, that was for the water. And currently, we've still in contract with HDR, and part of the contract was to, after we got the water model in place, the next step was to look at the other fees, and that's in progress right now. And we'll need to the finance base.
Also, you're looking at community safety fees?
I'm looking at everything.
Oh, baby. Yeah. So is that relevant, though, to, like, how, I'm worried about putting the cart before the horse. So is he gonna be able to take the PSU study that we did and relate the fees to that? Or do we need to refine, refine the need, especially based on the last couple of years of increase? And then have a look at the fees?
I haven't looked at the Portland study at all. I was just looking at it, we were looking at it whether or not the fees are high enough to pay for personnel and benefits and such.
And training.
And training, of course.
Well, and if emergency, like it does now, emergency coordination falls under my, my department, is, it's not, you know, it's not sustainable for funding.
It's not funded?
No. My budget was $10,000 this year.
How rough is your budget?
It's, it's, so the year before is $25,000, and that was when we were looking, the goal was to get the policy manual updated, and we didn't, we weren't able to do that. So the budget is coordinated between department heads, finance, and city manager.
And do you guys, you will be using the goals this year to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. As a team?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jen, that's important.
Anything else on public safety? Community safety?
Is there anything else on community safety?
No.
Okay.
Okay, sustainability, so we've got, we want to take a break.
Oh, take a break.
Jen, we're gonna break.
You mean from about an hour ago?
All right, so, my turn, maybe?
Yeah.
There we go. So we reached page two. We've got sustainability, the goal, two goals there. One is to reduce our carpet footprint as a community, and the other is to become more drought-tolerant and fire-resistant. So for the first one, we've got install solar panels for the police phone in the city hall. Yeah, they're installed. They're not broken yet, which relates to available resources. The contractor hasn't, hasn't been able to complete the project for a variety of reasons, but that is an achievable goal and will hopefully be achieved soon.
Can you tell us what the resources are that are available to them?
Funding to complete the project at the police station, and...
It's the battery bank. There's a delay, there's, the resource delay is securing equipment.
So it's like a supply chain, it's partly a supply chain issue?
Here is the supply chain, funding is up to you.
And was the shortfall in the funding because of inflation, or was it just we didn't pump it out?
It was, PPL changed their requirements for solar panel installation, and now it's requiring additional electrical work from the original plan that was approved to meet PPL's needs. So they're working on trying to find the extra funding to cover those additional costs.
And by they, are you talking about the contractor or PPL?
It's, we're working with Alternative Energy, PPL, and the city are all working together trying to come up with, with a plan.
Okay, that's, a low priority is about to be achieved.
No, that's low effort, low effort, not a priority.
Or low, low effort. It definitely is the last two months, not a low one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like it's standardized, right?
Most of recycled rail dust, the recycle in common item, I think that's coming up in April.
So, yeah, Together for Talent is taking that on. Hector was a huge help last year. We've really branded it, I think it's bringing to recycling now, but yeah, that's, that's happening. And that's Together for Talent.
I'm gonna make a note, just a moment. Establish Urban Forestry Master Plan, and the Urban Forestry Committee is working on that. They can be invited to. Increase the tree canopy. My sense is that there's been an increase. I think Hector, you thought it was probably over 1,000 trees.
Yeah, after, that was a quote from Kristen, with all the developments coming back and the landscaping requirements for including a tree.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've issued over 900 permits, and everybody, everybody is building single-family buildings, requires one tree, but they're putting in more trees than one, and then we have the multi-family residents that are also being built, fires.
Yeah, what was this one?
More trees.
Councilor McNamara?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a comment on that. I think working with, I was there, we were working with Mike Oxendine, or Nikki, or you, Dave, that was about the GIS ability to actually measure the tree canopy. Am I, am I remembering correctly?
Well, there is a way to do that, and I think Nikki's done some approximations. And I'm not sure how the, I think she uses the, it's the near map product, that, but there's, and there's AI tools that pull that out, and sometimes you have to pay more for the AI extraction. But you gotta sweet deal in the beginning, because the fire is a way to, but that contract is to build trees, so we're not sure how much more we have to pay for that kind of information.
Yeah, but I, just so we know, there is a way to actually measure the tree canopy rather than count the trees.
And updates to the tree canopy. I know the Urban Forestry Committee obtained a couple of estimates for consulting services to update the tree canopy. We'll be bringing that to your attention in the future. But it's, it also involves a resource over another community development, if they'd be involved in that as well, would need to add it to the... I assume that it is the highest priority in that group?
Highest effort level.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I think I do remember that there was kind of a conflating of effort level and priorities, but I think...
The goals are...
There's two factors, the key factors, but apparently this isn't going to be announced for the board. I don't know what happened to that, but it is really confusing, so in the future, we will.
Yeah. What originally shows is a timeline.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I'm not used to this.
Yeah. It's okay, I'll just keep saying it all day.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Any additions to activity or action items under the carpet footprints? Yeah, and become more drought-tolerant, pilot water conservation.
Agreed. So this was back when Brett Marshall was the director of the Public Forest Department, and what was discussed and decided back then is still the plan that I have currently is, Medford is updating their conservation plan, that their water commission, and once they complete theirs, since we purchase our water from Medford, we're gonna curtail off of their plan, which is their suggestion for all partner cities, so everybody's on the same, same wavelength on their conservation plan. So they're finishing theirs in fiscal year 2024, and then we will budget to complete ours in this following, following questions.
Councilor Meyer? Just out of curiosity, is it helpful for folks conceptualizing the steps being taken to reach these goals to add things that are in progress, like the recycling of the water from the swatch pad to water checkup department? I know, like, it's been conceptualized, I know we aren't there yet, but I know it's in progress, like, is it good to add that sort of thing so people have an even bigger vision of ideas that are being tried?
Any others?
Councilor McNamara?
Yeah, I have two goals for sustainability. They're essentially things that I know that Together for Talent is intending to take on this year, and it has to do with community education. The first one, under carpet footprint, I would say, support healthy homes, and that's just kind of a catch-all for, like, heat pumps and other things that are available. There's state money that will help with it. So support healthy homes, to kind of blanket cover that. I think the only staff impact would be to help promote any efforts that the committee's doing.
Is there a program for that?
Yeah, there is a program, it's called Healthy Homes, it's been listed, we know that right now. I'm not too much, I'm sure that will create the funding for people, but it's a matter of kind of educating the community and helping them make a connection between what they can do in their homes and supporting that. And a very parallel frame is also letting residents know how to be more fire-wise. So that's something Together for Talent is interested in, kind of, in some community education around that, and again, the staff, the staff resource would probably just limit to promoting those efforts on social media and website, that kind of thing.
I've been fortunate enough in other studies to have a fire department. We did a lot of work on emergency management on fire.
And Together for Talents volunteers are talking to RIAF staff, they're talking to Sherise and Ashland, it's all working within their... to Sharice and Ashland, and it's all working within their, but they're, they're willing to do the door to door, uh, exciting.
So you see that as a collaborative effort?
Absolutely, absolutely.
With the fire district?
Yeah, I think, I think the fire district, um, I think Ryder Christen has named himself available for this case today. Um, but I'm, I'm not, it's in the early stages right now, conversations, so.
And the, and the healthy homes program is something that's defined somewhere I've reached out on the internet.
Yeah, I think so. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure if the money is there yet. But yes.
Any other additions here?
Um, I guess what I'm learning is, I guess maybe we talked about it more at term meetings, but, you know, when I, I'm not seeing a lot of fire resistance here, which I think is a lot of people's problem. And, you know, just, I think there's stuff going on, but obviously it mentioned as a goal, like making sure we keep the avenues for fire to get into the city under control. If we rather keep the fire out of the city than have to fight the fire in the city. And so like keeping the greenways, um, clear and, you know, just reduce the ability for fire to get back to the green of the city. So I don't.
Okay. All right, we're gonna be doing. All right. I'll put it on the board anyways. We'll, we'll see.
Well, I mean, Dave has articulated something that I've never seen, that there are a lot of implementation or action items that get us towards meaningful goals.
Yeah.
Uh, for example, would be improving, uh, reducing the carbon footprint of us as a community, improving the mortality options. So I, you know, it, it's good to, I think, that it's the action items that move us towards that.
Yes, um, it happens every year.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so we move to transportation. So we've already, uh, added improved walkability or mortality to transportation. Uh, and we currently have established the Creel Road Connector. So it's low one level.
Yes.
It will be low.
So what's happening, what's happening with that?
We, we have a grant.
We have a grant.
Um, ODOT's working on it, and they're just kind of keeping us in the loop of where that's at. But right now, um, we were given a grant years ago. Um, they gave the city money to create that connector, and they're taking that back because they don't want the city building it. They're taking that, that money back at $625,000. And they're going to be putting that into the planning of the grant. And once they get the planning all done, they're going to, um, go out for, uh, forget the millions of dollars, two millions of dollars. Um, they're going out for another grant funding to put in, uh, curb butter and sidewalk along the highway and get, um, an RFP, RFFP crossing, um, at Creel Road or down further at the, at the entrance of the greenway.
So just a warning for everybody about ODOT and projects. I'm going to digress again to a anecdotal story. Brookings, I was, uh, city manager of Brookings in 2017. I was on the, uh, app on the area commission on transportation, actually, too. We were able to secure a approval of $1.2 million, uh, for the city of Brookings to construct curb butter and sidewalk from the area just north of downtown to Harrah's Beach State Park. Reproject was approved in 2017, put in the plan, uh, and engineers authorized. That project is scheduled for construction this fall. Was at four million dollars. So it's taken seven years from the time that it was approved in the ODOT state transportation group plan to when it's actually going to be built. Seems like a long time, but I, I, I say that because, uh, it, uh, may not be a high level of effort initially. Uh, but people wonder why things aren't getting done. And it comes under this topic of not under our control. So it might be high for everyone to us. Uh, and then it, once it gets into the state system, they have their own priorities. I think we all know that, but just wanted to put that out there. So don't expect it to be built next year. Reassemble Traffic Safety and Transportation Committee. I had a promise saying, Eleanor, that I was going to convene that for the last month. Uh, and I think after this workshop, um, and some other things can be on the, we'll be doing that in the next week or so. And then we've got the one under new goals. Make that a, uh, actual. For those.
Improve walkability, mobility?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a great goal. Cause there's lots of ways to, um, make that happen or updating the current goal to that.
Oh, that, yeah.
So we just, we're going to expand the title.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Change the title.
Okay, great, thanks. Yep.
Um, this is really, I'm, I'm wondering about the TSP, and so 2015, last year we really had the travel improvements plan that had some overlap, but the, uh, transportation systems plan, I think it might be, is this a good time to look at redoing that?
Uh, we are scheduled to start that in 20, end of 2024. We, we're on a schedule with ODOT and every, and so, yeah, we're, we're really kind of don't have a chance on that either. They've got a schedule.
They're pushing us to do something.
Yes, and they're, and they're giving us grant fund, we just have to do matching funds.
Right, okay, and that's matching funds that can be, is that equity?
I believe so.
TSP updated?
Yes.
It's part of the, I can't remember if it's part of CFAC or TGM, but we're required to do it as a result.
Seems like that's about a two year process.
Um, yeah, they've got every, uh, all the jurisdictions on a schedule and we're on their schedule. I've been in contact with them. I pushed ours out a little bit.
Anything else? Uh, all right, we're gonna move to community engagement. Communicate better with the community.
Um, Councilor Palmer? Gary?
Yeah.
Um, I'm slow, and I just thought of another thing I could wanted to add to transportation.
Okay.
Hopefully it's not, um, it's about coordinating with RBTD. Um, trying to maybe get, get the, uh, certain talent circular route that they're going to talk to. I think it's like in the plan in the future, but I think, um, just coordinating, uh.
Route seven, I think it is.
Yeah, and, and also Route 10, we're going to have a really cool, um, cob bus stop and stuff. So this would just be, um, coordinating with RBTD whatever cool projects they might want to do so they think about talent first.
Do we have some projects in talent that we want them to do?
There, there was a really cool project about having like, um, a bus station made out of cob.
I was just gonna say, making the bus station was more usable, especially in the summer. There are so many who have any shade at all, and it's just, we don't really need anything out there.
Yeah, yeah, bus stop.
Bus stop. I would hope that, uh, I would hope that they would prioritize Route 7. Um, that's the route that goes, actually, I believe the depot was originally built for that route. Um, and, um, uh, so that would be the route they puts up into the schools around, I think coming down the ramp and then the hangar and bringing people into the, Route 10.
So bus shelter? Route 7?
Yep, a shelter Route 7. Great.
What else do we need to have? If it comes to you later, Eleanor, this time.
She said trolley.
I said, be real.
Okay, there's, can I just say the idea of the talent trolley? Jacksonville actually has one, and there's, there's other folks that have it, so I just like to say it, it's a talent trolley.
Maybe there is.
They hear it in talent, they are. What?
The trolleys are made here.
Yeah, they're, they're over by UPS and Medford.
No, Dad. It's time for the talent trolley.
I'd rather have a train.
Yeah, okay, me too.
All right, um, that's tourism.
Yeah, totally. It's not the first time that they're brought up, I won't lie to you.
All right, so moving on to community engagement, uh, make city documents available online. That's the, you know, implement website.
So the.
That we're, that we're on the brink.
Yeah.
Of rolling out, Hector.
The, uh, goal here outlines available documents such as resolutions and ordinances. Uh, signed or resolutions and ordinances are available through a record request, but they're not currently on the website in any form. But what I've seen other cities do is when a document is recently passed, like a resolution, like we passed resolutions earlier this week, they will be signed and then on a special page have, uh, updated resolutions and ordinances. So that could be something we could add to the new site, uh, under the city council page.
Councilor Byers? Could we, and I know this means more, I'm sorry. Um, but could we add minutes for committees and commissions to also be available online with a, a specific time span decided on? Maybe not in this moment, but I think it would be, it would be helpful for folks. And I think it would be helpful for ongoing maintenance in addition to have a specific time span set.
We do that for council minutes, and I think it's, um, some, I think we've done pretty well with some of the community commissions, but I think what I'm hearing is just like maybe not that two years worth of.
Yeah, 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 not like the last ten years.
Well, I, I'd like to add an item in this area. There's, uh, for commissions and committees, uh, we've got quarterly chairs. But, um, let's first, we, we have seven committees and commissions, so.
Six active.
Six.
We will have seven with the traffic safety.
We'll have seven soon. How many of them staff?
With liaisons and, and city staff?
Just the commissions, I think.
So arts, who goes to arts?
They're, he's asking, you're asking about staff or liaisons?
Just city staff, not, most of them are not.
City staff, liaison.
Most of them are not.
Most of them are not.
So I just want to say the only, the only practice we've had in the past is that we staff the commissions.
Okay, all right. So here's, this is, this is a, uh, this is an area that I, I, I would like to address in a, uh, short term, but, you know, by the way. Commissions and committees with the exception, I think, of the planning commission, uh, their minutes and agendas are prepared by members of the commission or the committee.
Parks, uh, is, is Parks done? Parks is supposed to have staff.
Parks, Parks has staff.
I, I staff it, but the chair does their agenda.
And the secretary takes the minutes?
And the secretary takes the minutes.
And, and the commission, and as a member of the commission, that's the secretary that they say.
Yes.
So we're, on all of those, we're relying upon volunteers to prepare agendas, take minutes largely, with the exception of, you know, planning. So it, there, there's something that needs to be addressed in the committees and commissions by providing a different kind of staff support. We, we don't have enough people to staff every future. And maybe in Ashland, they do. They have 22 commissions, and they're all staffed. We, they've got more commissions than we have. So the, uh, uh, we need to come up with a better plan for providing support to the committees and commissions and providing that connection so the minutes do, the minutes get done, they're consistent, the format's consistent, the events are done, they're consistent, that they're deliberate to, uh, the community engagement department, the headquarters office on specific days, get them all posted, uh, and that there needs to be a, a method for getting the feedback from the commissions, put together, brought to the council in the form of recommendations. It's disjointed right now. So that, that's something I'd like to add to the list, is to come up with a new plan for committee engagements. I'm suggesting.
I, I think it's a question of reestablishing consistency of the plan that we have. I mean, I think a lot of stuff has fallen through the cracks, especially since the fire and COVID. And, um, and, you know, liaisons played a strong role in some of this in the past. And this is really, um, I think it would be important to review what we, what we've had. Like staff only took commissions, and at one point in time, we only had two commissions, now we have three. Um, so that's the only staff component of, of all of those groups. So I would like to see us do that for, and then see if there's room to improve on.
Okay, um, yeah, we're, we're particularly with committees who rely heavily on volunteers to do a lot of that, and, um, not having the ability to hold those managers accountable to get the information in, to get things posted on the website and get recommendations in a precise manner to the commission, to the.
I, I, what I'm proposing is that it hasn't always been that inconsistent. I agree it is inconsistent now. Um, and I would want to see us look at what, what work in the past, what worked before, what, um, has it used to work really well? Yeah.
Um, I just want to say, if you're suggesting like a documented process as to like, you know, boilerplate for meeting stuff, um, documented process as to how to get the agendas and all that stuff, I think that would be great to have that clarity, because the volunteers do want to do things right, it's just not always clear how to.
I think we've talked about some of the workflow chart as well, that.
Gary?
Yes. All right, so we're, uh, still on community engagement. Assess current projects through equity and inclusion levels. High level. What was it you asked, you're telling me about?
This is something I really thought about. And, um, what I was asking was, what I was asking was in the aspect of, um, city, doing city practices, looking for areas where there could be adjustments to improve both the inclusionary and ethical practices that are baked into what we do. Um, and I, I, as noted here, that requires having a consultant. Um, there was some discussion of would it require any sort of ad hoc committee? And understandably, other things have taken precedence, but that's the backstory of the project.
What would be an help that you would expect? What would be an outcome that we would expect?
An outcome that I really, that I really hope to see is an, an adjustment in city best practices that perhaps, um, help us either engage with a much wider range of community members, serve a wider range of community members with a more efficient service, or attract a wider range of people who are a good, if unexpected, fit for a whole, in a city staff.
How are we doing?
We have a wonderful collective of people in this room and we have really fantastic community members, but there's always room for improvement, right?
I think that's worth assessing, you know? I mean, I think there's the, to ask, ask ourselves that in the, in form of a, of an informed assessment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we don't have any really insight on, on the day to day. Um, we, as a council, we inspire the charter, we're responsible for creating policies uh, uh, in the workplace, but we don't have any insight as to how welcoming, um, our, our environment, our working environment is to people of color, to women, um, that sort of thing. So that would be something that, uh, I think that an outside assessment would be useful in, um, supporting.
And there are some really great practices that I know that, like Hector has spent so much time on in making hybrid meetings available for folks, which is a huge accessibility, um, improvement for having people being able to zoom in that are unable to, to come for any reason, having recordings on the website that in and of itself is an excellent best, best practice, which I see impacting our community really positively. So what are other things that we can discover to do? I think it's a discovery process.
All right.
And to assess our current.
Exactly.
Uh, I already made my comment on, uh, provide, uh, committee and commission support. Anyone else? Or girls? I think we talked about it.
It's in, it's in the, I mean, it's in the, uh, list of other things to provide training handbooks for council commissioners. And I don't think it's, um, I think it falls under the quarterly, um, I mean, it could be part of the chair summit. Uh, and then also handbooks. Uh, we used to, uh, provide everybody with handbooks, so I think that there's probably a template or something, or a established practice that we can just re-estate. Uh, but, but, so I feel like, um, I feel like, I guess what I'm trying to say is, uh, this is, would fall under the provide strong committee, commissions of four, maybe under the quarterly summit, which, uh, Hector did a really good job of making that a training session. And, um, so, and then combine that with, uh, or drop underneath that handbooks for council commissioners.
So that, that quarterly is, so much for chairs, uh, could be.
Yeah, it could be.
As a community chair, I mean, I, I think Hector did a good job. I just don't, uh, my loss for the Parks Recreation Commission and expectations as I move into the chair.
It's just weighing a little bit recently, but I think it's a matter of weeks, maybe.
Okay.
And you tell.
Anything else to add to that one? Go to regular community engagement, to conduct door to door, event surveying.
Councilor, Eleanor? Yeah, I see that that's, and then it does a staff thing. I think maybe Jordan was thinking about doing stuff. Um, I know that the Together for Talent is wanting to do some community education and they are, um, excited about the idea of surveying residents, either door to door or some other method. So I guess I'm just asking that, uh, if that surveying for that thing you might put slash committees, uh, because the, because the Parks Commission did a great job on surveying, and it actually, they did some really great surveys as well. So rather than that, just be, um, a staff lift and, and staff's willing to do whatever survey they want to do, I don't want to pinch on that, but just a bit slash committees because the committees are, have already been doing some surveying.
Does, does the council want to see the survey? For example.
I, I'll, Councilor Byers? I would say, one, so far, surveys that have been coming out from the parks, the parks are in fact, so they can make a recommendation to council. So I think if the council wanted to see it first, it, it feels like this closed loop of feedback. And, yeah.
And, and you have to base on these long, uh, commissions and committees doing, on committees, you know, credit.
Yes.
Kind of effort.
Yeah.
So where there is input, there is awareness.
Just asking, so I can get the call from the community because I have experienced city councils who want to approve everything.
Yeah, Councilor Byers, well, also to the point of this other, um, earlier thing of community quarterly chair summits, I do see again an effort to maximize outcomes of effort put out. So if there's one survey going out that's door to door, are there any other committees or commissions that would like a customer who will not survey that they could add on? You know, how can we, how can we really leverage?
When I was in Ashland, we did a multi-topic community survey and retained SOU to do that survey. They actually selected the wording, uh, and it was independently done. They did it in several ways, online, by date. So there's different ways to do that, both ordination.
Councilor Penney, or is it Councilor Byers?
Oh, thank you.
I just would advocate for combining, yeah, as well. I, we do a lot of, um, outreach in my day job and there's a lot of survey fatigue. So just, um, I would advocate for combining, we've surveyed about surveys and if they're not, if they're a little bit of a.
I'll just say that, which I think is, all of this is a really good reason for, uh, surveys to come before the council before they go out, so we can make sure there's coordination, so we can make sure that, um, we're not overburdening folks with surveys. All of that, I think is good and should come before the council.
Good on them.
Councilor Perry Miller?
Um, I don't know that I feel like it needs to go to the council, but I would at least want Gary to know because then he can say like, oh, there's also 10 other surveys that committees are planning to do, so let's try it out. Um, I also would just say, I think sometimes it's really confusing to the community, like the current survey that's going out, a lot of people have thought that that's coming from council or thought it's coming from staff, but really it's just parks. So I think like, just as consistent and clear as we can be, the better.
Okay, anything else to add to? The, um, well, we've got a published quarterly city newsletter. The staff has had some conversations about how to provide a newsletter. And I think we came back around and to continue, we put the flag. Rather than trying to mark, we've got some posting of that. Hector, any thoughts?
Yeah, we looked and Tess and I looked at, uh, publishing a city newsletter, then sending it out in the water bill. And that came out to about $1,200 per month, even if it was just, uh, a two-page black and white. Uh, so it was prohibitively expensive. When, right now, when you print and the talent news and reviews, and that's about $500 for almost two pages every month, distributed to every mailbox in Talent. So we got that far.
And additionally, it also supports a really important resource for our community. So I, I just really think that staying, and I've expressed this to Gary too, staying with the Flash is, uh, is a win-win.
So we met with the Flash, uh, last year about this time and they were quite frank with us and let us know that, uh, without our support in, in publishing in, in the talent news and reviews, uh, it would be, it would be harder for them to operate. So we understand that and.
Thanks for asking that.
So should I take, should I draw one? Should I, uh?
Yeah.
Wow, we should have talked about that. Any other thoughts to the last second? All right, two more whole areas, uh, and what kinds of lunch?
Food is here.
Okay, we breaking for lunch?
What, what?
What we doing?
Half hour?
Yeah, we're cheap.
Well, we have done, there has been some assessments done, I would say that, uh, it's in progress.
All right, so establish or participate in economic development cohort. I'm not familiar with economic development cohort. We need to create one.
I, I think we should, we, Talent Business Alliance was not, was Talent Business Alliance up and running at the time when we were talking about this last?
Not really.
Yeah, so I think a lot of this has been, uh, picked up. We had that great SOU study post fire about what the impacts on our local businesses and what they need. Um, Talent Business Alliance took that and has been helping the city. I think in making sure that great money gets to local businesses in Talent. Um, so to some extent, Talent Business Alliance has picked up, uh, and worked on these goals.
Right.
I would say it might be fruitful to change the goals because, um, I mean, I think there's two, two perspectives, one of them would be like the on the ground service of businesses, which is what TBA does. Uh, but then the economic, and, and that's economic development in a sort. To me, these things might all fall under that category where economic development from the city's perspective is different. Like this is almost like goals for TBA, not goals for, um, for the city. So from an.
It's for the third goal.
Except, yeah, I'm talking about the first top two, yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, and so to me, like, we can almost start at, at the third goal.
Third, third goal or second?
The, well, it's the, it's the second goal, but it's the third task. Update our economic opportunities analysis.
All right, folks agree with that?
Um, yeah, I agree. Also, uh, opportunities analysis slash, um, uh, economic element, the common one. I think that's like really old, maybe? Maybe just review that.
Yeah, it's not that old, but it's, I think, are you talking about the economics now in the common? Yeah, I think it's only about seven years old, maybe. Yeah, so review, I think I agree with.
Okay.
Councilor Byers?
Um, I am remembering my own comment earlier about how implementing the Gatlinville project kind of a split between affordable housing and economic development.
Yeah. At the beginning of the combo? Yeah.
Anything else to add here? Economic development, what's the? So what's the goal of economic development? What do you want to achieve through economic development?
I think, uh, I think an, an economic development strategic plan for the city, yeah. So I mean, we, that's the benefit of just reviewing the analysis rather than, so we don't get caught up in trying to create a new analysis, we can just go straight to strategic plan. Maybe some updates, but not. By the way, uh, I just, as a side note, the, the, one of the good things about the last EOA that we did is it has implementation steps that were just never taken, but they're broken down, um, in the EOA. And I almost feel like that, that, that will be a great part in form of strategic plan. I think this is a head.
So actually, so like the goal of, my right, the goal of economic development that makes us important is to achieve this goal of, um, sustainable foundation. Do you need economic development to achieve sustainable foundation?
No. Yeah, in part.
So we've got some projects there, it's the economic opportunities analysis to update, build new tennis courts. Resurface the skate park and install public art here with family. I've heard about all of those. Installing public art in those downtown shows us a high effort level.
Public arts.
So is that something that's been driven at the Parks and Commission too? Or not?
It's been driven by, it's been driven by.
All the parks.
I do think there's room for cooperation between commissions on the number of, we've discussed whether it's this or it's the restoring the tree canopy or improving the modality, within our city, I think there's a lot of room for cooperation.
Okay, any, what else we got on economic development? Anything else we should be doing?
I just want to add that, um, Talent Business Alliance is actually just supposed to need a, a grant to do this strategic planning for the art building thing. So, um, I, uh, I wonder if it's, I wonder if it, if it's even still needs to be on here. I just don't want to, well, since it's assigned to public arts, I suppose it can be stated.
So there'd be some collaboration.
Well, there definitely is. There's a little version that's on the grant.
Anything else? Okay, so moving down to the foundations. So, uh, sustainable foundation, three goals there. First, the city code policies and practices are consistent, up to date and documented. Yeah, we got a ways to go there. One thing I more than noticed in the first two minutes. About financial management policies.
Okay, um, that, a draft has been crafted and it's been temporarily tabled due to time constraints. There needs to be a chapter added to it that addresses federal grant requirements. And, um, that's another piece that needs to be added to it. It should be pretty much ready to, for your review and then to be brought to the CFC board, hopefully approval.
Well, is that a, uh, low to medium or above?
I would say it's medium to high. It really, it really needs to be addressed and it's going to have to be a much bigger conversation, especially when we start establishing what our fund balances are, what we want, um, targets for fund balances in each part of our funds. Um, we have, there was a conversation, um, when we had Josiah Smith from HGR. We currently have 90 days of O and N, um, requirement for fund balance in the water fund and that's insufficient. We chose that target only to keep rates, um, a little lower than, um, what we'd wanted it to be. So those, those kinds of things may be taken into consideration. When you say we have a 90-day, um, target, that's, is that the current target that we're working with? But is it the target we'll use moving forward? Um, current, it's, it's the target we're currently working with, but we, as we become more financially stable in the water fund, we should be looking at up to one year, in my opinion. And will that be the kind of information we can count on seeing in your, in your, in these financial management policies? Um, eventually within, like, with your financial statements, um, one of the things that I think. that would be in the report is that we establish metrics in the statements. Where are we hitting that goal of maintaining 90 days of operating expense set aside in that fund by having, like, if it's, if it's more than a nine, let's say it's 120 days, we give it a green light. If it's hit 90 days, it's, or, let's say, let's say 95 and 85 days, we should be getting maybe a yellow light. And if we're significantly below that, I'll have somebody who has a little red light on. You, you are in tune to whether or not we are hitting our targets.
Love that. So you're gonna be building accounts into that?
That's eventually is why I just want to have those metrics in there, so it's, it's easy for you to...
Two biggest funds are general and water?
I'm sorry, what?
Two biggest funds are general and water?
Yeah, the general fund is the biggest one. By law.
In your, let's try to say, what would, what should the reserve be?
In the water fund, one year. That's, that's, that's my dream. I would also like to see a water rate, how would you say, it's like a mitigation fund where it's a fund that's set aside, so let's say, for instance, we have unforeseen, something happened, let's say, something happened here in Rosewood and it wasn't in the budget and it's not covered by insurance and it's requiring us $500,000 or, to fix it. Well, that's really gonna translate into rates immediately. And if we have like a mitigation fund and we have a rate set aside to take care of that.
General fund precisees, where it should be?
I don't know yet.
So you're gonna be doing the financial analysis?
I'm currently in the process of doing financial projections based upon the current status quo as far as our rates and fees. And that's what I'm currently working on right now.
So, then when you finish that, will we bring a report to the people? Will you bring a report to the city council? And will that report include a recommended reserve level?
Correct. And a recommended, just kind of like what we did with the water fund, this is what we recommend for the rate action to be. We have Josiah Close from HGR that is still in contract with us and before anything goes to county, to theory and then to council, it's really important that we have a professional that has a set of eyes to make sure that the calculations are correct. So we don't miss anything.
So, would it be a council goal, or a council item, this goal? Not today, but once we get that information, to establish a, a goal of what the reserve fund should be and held to?
Yes. Oh, sorry, I changed.
I also want to say yes, but as you speak to like an unforeseen consequence, just like the fire was an unforeseen consequence, I think, I think it's good for the city to know what other resources are likely to come to essentially our rescue. As the legislature came up with funds to augment what we lost to property taxes after the fire, there's probably, Tessie, you said we're covered by insurance, things like that. That's good to know, but along those same lines, it'd be good to know also, what are those state or federal organizations, resources, what have you, that would be helping us out in the case of a financial emergency?
That could actually be addressed in the financial management policy on maybe the chapter or back page where we can, you know, hold a theme of this situation, you get a hold of, I don't know, or ensure, have all the different possible funding sources outlined, so it's easy so that we can just open up the book and go, okay, I need to talk to someone, so, and you have the phone numbers that are ready to go.
That sounds great.
Alright, so next we've got update personnel handbook.
That is in process.
Is that a...
That's probably a high priority. I do believe the personnel handbook is very old.
Is it a low?
High.
A double?
Oh, sure. Sorry. It's, it's actually probably a medium to high effort. It's, it's, there's a lot of legal needs that needs to go over. And I do believe, I think we're using City County's handbook model. I gotta double check with that.
Okay, so we need a whole handbook?
Our handbook hasn't been updated, how long is that?
We're on the same one, and I've been there 23 years.
A lot of this?
It's the same one when I started.
How many years is that?
23.
I thought, I thought we updated it like three years ago, or before the fire, the policy?
Personnel handbook.
Oh, is that different?
So, I could tell you a lot has changed in 23 years in the area of HGR.
Wait a minute, what are we talking about? Personnel handbook, which is different from the employee handbook was the one that we worked on a few years ago? If I remember correctly?
Yeah, I have a copy of it, I know.
We're talking about personnel rules and handling.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have created, we have created about four of them with RV cog. I will send you guys copies.
May not have been implemented.
Haven't seen it.
Okay. We will check that out.
Even four years ago, it must be updated.
For sure. Yeah. And we contracted with RV cog to do that, by the way.
I have the same one since 2000.
What's that?
I have the same one since 2000.
Could have been for personnel services?
Nope. I, to my email.
I think they called it employee handbook.
Yeah.
Is what I wanted to say.
There's an update to it, I don't know if it was a wholesale update to it, but...
Sanders, Bellis, he was our city manager at that time, I think.
We'll go on a search. Are you, who's the senior employee here?
By age or by time in?
I do feel that's senior.
When I said we contracted with RV cog to do that, I mean, we contracted with RV cog to review that periodically, so it sounds, may not only, I just want to make sure that our contract either was not fulfilled or it was not signed, but if we fulfilled it, I mean, if we, if we entered into it, I just want to make sure we didn't pay for something we didn't get. That's really all we did. So, I'm looking at the senior employee, but really, I mean, paid a lot of...
That's gonna take some digging.
Yeah, it happened in the last, we contracted in the last year that Tom Corrigan was employed.
Well, I will add, the police department has their own policy manual and so it covers a lot of what we're talking about, and we update even monthly.
Yeah, I think, the last I remember is Tim Donnie did a big huge update on that as well, right?
Yeah, so the company we contract through is Lexible. And so they, as an example, they sent us, last month we received 12 updates to the policy manual.
Wow.
That all published and then the employees all have to acknowledge. It's all electronic. It's, it's really a good system that we have in place.
Which was kind of the intention of, and this is, I guess why I'm saying this, is because I'd like to see it like pursued. The intention we had with RV cog was that there would be some sort of automatic process where it would get reviewed and updated automatically and...
Check that out.
Yeah, thanks.
Update technology management policy.
And yes, that's probably, first of all, I've not seen any policies in regard to that. It's probably tabled, well, needs to be tabled because we're taking a different direction with our IT support. So maybe are you...
As Steve's listed as being a progress for, we don't know. Yeah, we do need to take a first look at the result of the policy change. I have to worry. That is, given the funds. Okay. Update job description.
I don't know if that was assigned to him. It was probably the city manager at the time.
Okay.
Some of them haven't been updated. Some of them.
Some have, yes.
Yeah, some for me too.
We need to, we need to route that. And develop annual training schedules for each position. Annual training schedules for each position.
I don't think that's gonna be out. Mine, mine isn't.
And the police, police does a good job at this.
Public Works is set by required CEUs for our certification, so, I mean, they're on a two-year cycle.
What's a CEU?
Continue education credit.
Oh, CE?
CE. I think UN is...
Or, yeah.
Alright. Any thoughts there from the council, official media?
I, I just want to say for training, I think some of it was also geared towards maybe EDI, EDI training.
Okay.
I, I, Councilor Byer, I want to say that, but as a, I think that it's so much more important to, if we're talking about like EDI, EDI work, to like a policies and best practices before anything else, because if there's just a second of operating that's a standard procedure throughout, then I think it mitigates a lot of the issues that can arise and, so, we have to... Wait two seconds.
Policies or training? It's me, sorry. Wait, you know, yeah. Is that a, is that a goal we can actually set, like, I, I mean, I appreciate it, I almost feel like it, it might be important for us to re-scape the way that goal is, like, in terms of outcomes rather than... Go ahead, Aron.
City infrastructure is well maintained. So it's a medium effort level.
For developing the facilities master plan.
For master plan. Calculate need to this cost by project time. Not sure what that...
What's that mean?
Oh.
Is that what it would be?
So when we identify a project, we also, in addition to the estimated cost of construction, we do estimate the life cycle payment.
And then that should translate into budget?
Is that, am I interpreting that right?
I've never done this. Can I ask a quick question? And I don't need to gee the dead horse, but really, I want to know the answer. To what degree did staff participate in these goals?
So, last year Brett Marshall was involved, so as far as public works, I can't say how much public works was involved. I had zero...
So it wasn't like a group, it wasn't a group experience?
Not, not as far as I know. I don't know if Brett, Brett participated as the director, but I had zero involvement.
Oh, and, and just to be clear, are we talking about the whole set of goals under sustainable foundation? Like, was there a, like, at a department hand meeting where you guys all talked about these goals or was it individual?
I feel like some of these things we did talk about through the last, about a year and a half ago. That we did, like, the, update the policy manual, I mean, those were things that we had discussed, but not...
I don't think it was a formal...
No.
Yeah. Well, it sounds, I mean, it looks like it was effective, but I'm just, I'm just curious.
Oh. Who would have got to develop a facilities master plan? I already hit that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Establish equipment and vehicle replacements given. I know Tessie was working on that.
Yeah. Fleet management policy, the draft is complete for this year. We next need to identify, you know, which vehicles need to replace when, but that needs to be tied to budget.
And then as part of that, will you be, will you decide vehicles don't need to be replaced because, because I know that we have, we have a lot of what you called surplus?
Yeah, surplus.
Yeah, and surplus meaning that it doesn't, like, we may not need a replacement of that?
I know that we have two vehicles that are going to auction.
Yeah, public works has one vehicle and police has one vehicle going to auction next week.
And then, Councilor Conamore has had a follow-up question on the development of the master plan.
I'm just not clear, are we talking about facilities like buildings or are we interpreting it more broadly?
That facility's master plan is geared towards buildings.
Okay. And that's just kind of like a, what buildings do we have, let's get them all on the plane?
So it's, I, my interpret, and this is just my interpretation, my interpretation is like, you know, City Hall has a, has a boiler system, you know, it's got a lifespan, so we need a, we, a master plan on, you know, how we're gonna find the lifespan of that boiler, when we're gonna replace it. Same thing with windows, lights, upgrading LED, heating and air infrastructure. Those things all have life cycles, so to have a master plan associated with, with all of our facilities, we can cash all that so we can get it into our budget documents so where we can start putting money away, so we don't come up to a position where the HVAC unit dies in this building and we gotta fork out $700,000 to replace it.
Alright. And, and it'd be great to have that dovetail with what's in our comp plan under clean energy. And replace those things for the cheaper heat pumps and stuff where we can.
Right.
Okay, so we're looking at, and are we discussing the model?
Yeah. It's, it's complete, but it should be looked at on a annual basis. It should be, because what's in the model, could, you know, could vary, can, can, can change considerably due to, let's say, supply chain issues, increases in power and such and such. So we need to take a look at it on an annual basis.
SDCs?
That needs to be recalculated and looked at. I, I personally need to have a better understanding of the SDCs and how they're formulated here with the city of Talent. That's something I need to understand sooner than later.
Councilor Conamore? So would that be something that would be good to have, like, a consultant come, some expertise and train you up as well as developing whatever developments you needed right away?
Yeah.
It's an engineering function to come up with this, be similar to the water fee schedule. The SDCs look at your master plan for water. Here's what's needed over the course of next years for replacement of a water system, expansion of a water system based upon your comprehensive plan. And then they put some numbers to what, what it's gonna cost to do all of that stuff and estimate a rule, using a rule factor, estimating when those facilities will be needed and then backs into a specific role.
Okay, so like, is engineering costing tied to our capital footprint?
Then finance, should we provide a, should the engineers provide actual costs after the project has been done?
I think the last time we updated it, we updated, we put it on a matrix so that it would update, it would increase with, with cost of...
With the CCI?
Yes, but I don't think we, I don't recall it being tied to the capital footprint, which sounds like an amazing advancement.
Now, the capital footprint is really the basis for the SDC. It, it, you can't have a defensive SDC program unless you have capital plan. And of course, there's no good SDC for everything, it's only for water.
Parks.
We have it for...
Transportation. And state, public safety.
I could be wrong about that. I mean, I, I, like, that's what I recall, I recall a matrix piece only. I mean, maybe they did it internally, but, but I don't remember that.
With water, not to my knowledge, I don't think the capital footprint is involved.
Okay. Water rate models and these, is that the same number one? In that group? In change, in change of business licenses?
Can I go back to the adopt rate models for fees and charges for service? If that piece is in front, if the water was like the first step, then we still have to take a look at the other new fees within that.
Go ahead, Lou, your final.
And then change the business license system. My understanding that the business license software is on a lower level software than our financial software, and the reason for that is with the upgrade to the financial software piece, the business license wasn't ready yet, so I need to reach out to Tyler Technologies and see if they actually have that component with the existing software system. It does, it's on basically two separate software pieces, but they're the same company. One's like the version seven, which is like the business license system, and then the finance is the version nine.
Is there a system that contains both of them?
No, well, not at this time, here. They, we may have the business license capability in the version nine, we just haven't done it yet.
Just, you did say it's the same software, main company?
Correct.
That puts up with products, so they should work together, right?
They should.
Okay.
It's, it's like having different versions of Windows on your computer.
But we're not changing the system, we're just changing the software.
No, the, the version of software, from the seven to the nine.
But not the system, because we can have a system in place.
We have a system in place, yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I don't want to be tedious about this, Gary, but, um, so, does that, does that always have to be, need to update this one for about ISO update that one? Do they always have to update together?
Don't really.
I just would, I, I just would think that we would build in, like, we would build in some sort of, some sort of trigger that we update one, we also.
It was my understanding when I was talking to somebody at the finance department, uh, last week, that when we went to the version nine, the business license module was not there yet, and that's why we're operating in two different versions.
So would this include a review of the business license changes?
That is another topic of conversation, we do need to take a look at that as well.
Can we add that to the goal?
Yes, um, like, um, finance has already been reaching out to other municipalities and getting that information on what other cities charge for business licenses. I think the last piece of the plan is the city of action.
So it's already in progress?
Yes.
So review business license in.
Other municipalities. And another feature, another fee that we're looking at, you remember on last Wednesday when there was a resolution adopting, um, new, new water meter fees and retaining the gold fees, a part of the resolution. We're currently working on, um, coming up with what should be the fees for those, um, new water fees.
So pulling off my list from my meetings with, uh, council members, I've got items that might flow in the list list, including review city financial condition. Implement organizational efficiencies. Pursue grant funding to help fulfill the capital improvement plan. And implement plans we have. Got a lot of plans.
Um, may I add, for your entertainment, two policies and plans that we, I think that we do need. We need to create and adopt a long-term financial plan where we look forward, right now we're looking forward five years. Um, I think beyond five years is a little too much. Create and adopt one of those that ties to the capital, um, the CIP plan and ties to revenue projections, and then also create and adopt an investment policy. That's another thing that we need to take a look at.
And a question.
Are you sure you have enough to do?
Please do that.
Well, you can, um, you can, you can prioritize those and.
The investment policy, um, I have an idea what that should be, the long-term financial plan, I'm currently working on that. Just started that.
Okay. I'm gonna back up. So we have one commissioner here, are there other commissioners?
Committee member.
I'm a committee chair.
Okay, which, which committee, I'm sorry?
Um, Architecture Review.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, so, you've sat through this for three hours. Anything that would bring to the council's attention that we're missing? Any thoughts overall on the goals, the policy?
I do, yes. Um, if I may pass this out, um, it's kind of time to refresh a little bit on Architecture Review and historic preservation. I was one of the people that started it in 1990s. Um, we started by doing an inventory of a certain selected area in the town funded by grants, and, um, we have documented, um, inventory of the historic sites and resources. Um, we also updated the comprehensive plan, and we had a contact statement done and code written, and, um, design guidelines as well. So, um, we were established to be a friendly and cooperative, um, group of people to work with property owners and contractors as they are working with historic properties or vintage properties or infill or new construction in kind of the downtown area, now we call it Old Town. Our mission is to maintain the integrity of the Old Town neighborhoods, the historic fabric, both with the old buildings and the newer buildings. We had 20 years of really successful work, um, and in, uh, 2014, things changed, and so for the last nine years, we have not had that, that separate body that was in an advisory, um, position to staff. Um, it was set up as, as a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, uh, for various reasons I won't, I won't go into now. But I wanted to bring your attention to that, and that, that the last nine years, in my opinion, we are starting to lose some of the historic fabric of our, of our neighborhoods downtown that helps to make us unique, that was also one of the goals of the city a number of years ago, to continue to maintain that. And, um, a year ago, we have a new committee that was appointed by the council, thank you very much, uh, that is back to that advisory role to, to city staff. So what we do is review all sorts of design app, review applications that come in. We do onsite, um, consultations with people who are considering maybe a change to their building, um, and we try, we're bringing back that friendly cooperative, we're going to help you, um, and try to interpret code as best we can also. But I think in the nine, the nine years when we didn't have that consistency that we've established, in that first 20 years, we've started to lose a few things. One of the main things is that people don't know, we've lost institutional memory in the city of why this was created in the first place, the value that we have. The map that I sent out to you just now, that's just a screenshot, this is an example of some of the things we've lost. This is a map of the seven, more than 70 properties that were identified as having historic value to talent, um, and they're identified in terms of, um, historic importance and value, in terms of the color, and they, they've been identified on a larger map. The city no longer has that, they don't have Homer Server, RV cog put it together for us back in the 90s before the city had GIS, um, and RV cog has lost it as well. So I happen to have a copy, because I hope throw things away. Um, and so this is just kind of a scan and a snapshot of that, but to show you kind of the fabric that we have here, we're starting to lose some of the fabric, both, both with, um, uh, sometimes inconsistent infill or, um, um, loss of understanding of how the historic, um, fabric needs to have more of a primary focus than a, than a secondary focus. Um, but mostly people don't know because they don't know they're in the Old Town, they don't know they have a cool building, they don't know their building next to a cool building, um, staff, um, doesn't have the resource, they don't know that there's certain, um, policies and procedures in place that we knew about while we put it in there. I said I was going to be very brief, I'm going to make it brief, sorry. The thing, things that we need from you right now are, um, we need a dedicated page for Old Town on the website. I don't know if it's in there or not, but we have two sections of code, we have, um, design guidelines, we have maps, and we have the inventory and a contact statement, all of which are hundreds of pages that would be of use to people who are working in the Old Town area. Makes our job much easier if people know ahead of time, before they put pen to paper and estimate their projects, if they don't know what they're supposed to be doing. And then it makes our job harder, knowing you have to say, yes, except you missed this part of the code, or you missed this, or have you considered this, can you consider this? So, um, that would be very helpful for us. Um, it would be great if you supported our budget request for this next year. Um, we do need to have some, some aspects done, um, we need to have some of our GIS maps put back into place again, because we, they're no longer useful to us, they're just a scan that you can't read anymore. And, um, also an opportunity to talk with you, to bring you up to speed on how all this impacts, all the other, um, economic development, sustainability is another one, um, many of the, the goals you already have in place here. And a couple of other thoughts, um, as there's work being done on code work or zoning changes considered for in or around the downtown area, it'd be great if we had an opportunity to provide some feedback on it, because we do have a little bit of different, um, focus on that. And if we could provide feedback to you and you take it seriously, that would be great as well.
Can I ask a question? It's so great to learn more about this, thank you for sharing so much. I'm really curious, I mean, it's, it's so recent and so fresh for so many people. What efforts that Architectural, uh, Committee, Review Committee are taking to both make recommendations that support the, um, historic feel and fabric, while also are fire wise and fire related? I'm curious to hear.
And I meant also to say before I started, thank you all for what you're doing. Huge, have you left post fire? My hat's really off to you, I don't know that I would have the energy to do what you're doing, so thank you very much. There's, um, I think when people are working with an older building, sometimes they make, um, assumptions that it isn't a modern material, it isn't a modern technique, that, um, it's not as good as something that's more modern. I think there are things that, um, people need to consider, there's, um, fireproof, more fireproof roofing materials that to, that you can choose from, there's A-rated and B-rated, um, fire roofs. Um, things like cleaning out your gutters is really important that people often don't think to do. I continue to forget about my gutters as well. There's different techniques and materials that can be used, um, but every house is different. And that's one of the things that Architecture Review can do, is we have people with construction experience, we have people with, um, real estate experience, architectural experience, um, and every project is a little bit different, and so we address those individually.
Marley, is this the 19, is this the actual 1995 survey or was this the updated survey?
No, it's not been updated, this is 1995.
Okay, um, and, um, when Architectural Review was consolidated with Planning Commission, I think is what happened, right?
It was, a subcommittee was created out of that.
What do you mean?
Um, Architecture Review became a subcommittee, right, of Planning Commission.
In 2014?
Uh, or, I don't know if it was in 2014, but that's when Architecture Review people left. And I think Zach just took it on himself and was doing.
Yeah, I think, because I got on the Planning Commission in 2014, and I don't remember hearing about Architectural Review for a period of time, and then there was a subcommittee, and, uh, we definitely did not have the understanding that you have. You're pretty much floundering to try to understand how we're supposed to do this thing.
And so is it part of, um, part of the plans of the current Architectural Review to update the code or update this 1995 plan?
The code needs a lot of work, um, there's a lot of holes in it, um, because there's, um, it's just really confusing for anyone who's trying to work with it and read it, to understand what to do, and there's very little detail on what you're supposed to do with an existing building. It's only a couple of pages and all the rest is all new construction, and there's this, there's this missing middle piece. One example is that, um, sustainability is important, and if you have a historic building, anytime you get rid of wood, um, you're, that's not a sustainable practice. First, sustainability is you fix and repair what's there, second, you replace, only those parts are damaged, and third, um, and the last resort is to completely replace everything wholesale. So, um, there's little things like that, and, um, more information on how to do things that we would like to add. And maybe it's in the code, or it's in the, we update the guidelines.
I, I guess what I'm trying to find out too is if there's any value in just reviewing, like, it sounds to me like when, um, when the Architectural Review was consolidated, or there was a subcommittee created that some stuff got dropped, and, and it's, and that's what you guys are working on now, is there any value in just reviewing what we had before and reinstating that?
That's what, we've already done that, um, and we're working with it now. Most of the committee members are brand new to this, there are three of us that were on it for a number of years and know how it works. Uh, we're getting the other ones trained, we have a group of seven people, seven people? Yes, plus a, plus an eighth in, um, so, uh, everyone's just getting at their feet underneath them. Some of the materials are just missing, and there was no, um, institutional memory that got carried on. And I think Kristin, you weren't, you weren't made aware of some of the historic stuff when you came, perhaps, or as much as, um, was available for them.
It would come through the, probably the planning process, but let me, I guess the last question I want to ask, and I'm, you know, glad that this is back on, or it seems to be getting back on track. One of the things, um, that we might be able to install in the goals is just, uh, more updates on the work that you guys are doing, um, because I, you know, we reinstated last year, I think it was, or the year before, and, um, just having an update on what is coming back from pre, from before the, the change in the way this worked, 2014 or whenever it was. Um, I, I think would be helpful, like, we don't have any communication ability from Architectural Review about what, what, um, and planning brought this up at one point in time, what is happening with the codes and the code revisions. So it'd be interesting to hear the progress that you guys have made and maybe at the planning level or at the council.
Okay, I'll think, I'll think about an efficient way to do that, you know, we, we could probably write, probably be me writing a report on how things have changed and what the process has been, and what we're using now, what we're bringing back, that might be the most comprehensive way of doing that. Um, if you want to have a study session at some point, I know it's extra time, we could do that, but, um, that would be kind of the range.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, for sure.
So, so we want to add to the actual items, updating the map?
Yes, right? Are you guys working on that?
Working, working with the map, actually.
Uh, and do we want to add, uh, you're working on guidelines, updating guidelines? And then we want to add, you're working on guidelines, updating guidelines?
We're working, we're working slowly through the code. And many of the, the things that we're working on are going to be guidelines, but, and that's, it's a real heavy lift. It's a lot of work to be done.
Okay, do we want to add that to the actual items?
Yeah, and this is not in the current planning stuff, Kristin?
No, we have that.
Oh, okay.
It's in the, it's in the handout. It's in the planning handout.
Councilwoman Hamar?
A question for you, Marla. You said that there was a budget request.
Mm-hmm.
What is your budget request for?
It's gonna be for public education. We have a lot of work to go back, we had a lot of rapport built up with the property owners and contractors. And that's what we want to reestablish again. Know, first of all, knowing that something exists, that there is code, there is guidelines that if you're planning on working on any, came with your property, you need to come talk to us, because that's the way the code is set up, but they don't know that. The website, we are finishing up a brochure that we want to do some mailing to people and also have on the website. We want to reach out to contractors to let them know that if they're doing business in the Old Town area, they really need to come in and get a permit. And if it's something that's not permissible, that's not a permit-type process, like re-roofing or changing windows, those types of things, if you're in the Old Town, you still need to come in and talk to planning anyway. So that's, we have a lot of misses there where people don't, are either, either not getting permits for things or they're making changes on things that don't require a permit, but really would be required under the Old Town guidelines or standards.
And people that are residents as well as businesses, they can use the education? Okay, so I guess my question is, is that's gonna be a budget request. Is there, does there need to be a goal or action item directly related to public education? Is that what you can just put that? I see the historic map, I just wanted...
Yeah.
The, the point was, the budget request will be for public education with regard to the historic area and whether we need to have that if, if it is gonna be budgeted.
Yeah, we make it a goal then.
We need to get your money.
Yeah, totally. We're gonna talk about that on Monday. We also want to have a, as part of that, a reference library so that as a new committee members come on, we know we have this set of reference materials. And also at, hopefully at the, the regular library as well, again, so that people know what all the options are.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So all of this work that you're envisioning, it sounds like this would be either consulting or, or the committee itself, or would it be taking your staff time?
It would take staff time.
It would take staff time, okay. So that would have to be factored in, as staff would be taking it.
And, yeah, and we need, we need...
And prioritize, tell us how to prioritize.
And we need GIS remapping also, because this map, again, this, I was just able to find this in my own papers and get it scanned so that community development can have it.